Everybody's ready.
Looking for the phone line, sure, yeah, ready.
I call to order the Gladstone City Council meeting for November 12th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Hello, everybody, and happy National Pizza with All the Works Except Anchovies Day.
Mmm.
No one ever expected that one, so perfect opportunity. We have a wonderful little pizza place just down the street. I don't think they're open today, but support a local business and go to the Portland Avenue Pizza Company. And tomorrow is World Kindness Day, so when you wake up tomorrow, remember that kindness matters. So tonight, we're going to start with a presentation by our partners in all things sewer and stormwater, Water and Environmental Services, by their director Greg Geist. We'll have you start in just a second. Our consent agenda includes approval of October 8th, 2019, regular meeting minutes, approval of the September bank balances, budget report for period ending September 30th, 2019, approval of the September check register, legal costs on projects, department head monthly reports for October 2019, Resolution 1167, adopting City of Gladstone representation and updates to the Clackamas County Multi-Jurisdictional National Hazards Mitigation Plan, okay? Resolution 1168, Department of Land Conservation and Development, also called the DLCD, Affordable Housing Technical Assistance Grant Funds. Our regular meeting agenda includes an intergovernmental agreement, also called an IGA, between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone regarding the new Gladstone Library. Clackamas County Library District Task Force to consider appointing two members from Gladstone. Resolution 1169, which is a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing Resolution 1163. This will include updates to the utility rates and police department fees effective January 2020. Resolution 1170, establishing a policy regarding media and executive sessions, and Ordinance 1497. This will be the second reading to add Chapter 5.55 to the Gladstone Municipal Code, also called the GMC, titled Business Food Waste Requirements. Tammy, could you please call the roll? Counselor Ripley?
Here.
Counselor Neese?
Present.
Counselor Tracy?
Present.
Counselor Eisner?
Here.
Counselor Todd?
Here.
Counselor Mercero?
Present.
Mayor Stempel? Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we get started with the presentation, I just wanted to announce that it is Counselor Tracy Todd's birthday today.
And it was your birthday, what, two days ago, three days ago?
That's right, that was forgotten. No, no, that's not important. All right, so we'll start with Water and Environmental Services.
Good evening, Mayor Stempel, councilors. My name's Greg Geist, I'm the Director of Water and Environment Services, we're Department of Clackamas County. I'm here tonight really to give you an overview of what we do and present our inaugural annual report. Hopefully, you have those in your packets. We have some in the back of the room for the audience if they'd like to take a look. So, yeah, we're going to be talking about all things West tonight. And I do have a soft voice, so make sure I speak up. And I know you guys have a packed agenda, this should roll through pretty quickly, but feel free to interrupt me at any time, ask any question that you'd like. So, Water and Environment Services, we're about 105 employees. We have everything from engineers and electricians to accountants, laboratory technicians, field crews, and we deal with wastewater and stormwater. We have a, how we're structured is we're governed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we have an advisory committee that's currently 17 members, about five or six of those are either current or former elected folks from our service district. We have a budget committee that's a subset of that, and then, like I said, the Board of County Commissioners is our governing body. So our mission is to protect public health and the environment, number one, provide the infrastructure that you're, and I'm going to be talking a little bit more about what we're doing there, to support economic development, and educate the public about clean water, and we have to do that with keeping rates as low as possible. This is our service area, and I can't, I don't think a pointer works, oh, no, pointer doesn't work. We have basically three rate zones. We, about two years ago, we consolidated three districts basically into one. Those three districts did everything from just surface water management to a combination of what we call wholesale and retail, that's wastewater treatment and conveyance, or just wholesale, so treatment, basically. So we had different areas doing different, providing different services. So we've collapsed that into one West organization, but we still have an artifact, different rate zones depending on what services we provide. Part of the, I guess the message around that regionalization, the partnership, the West 190 partnership that was formed, I won't read through all of those things, but it really is paying dividends. Right now, we have $230 million five-year capital improvement plan, and we can orchestrate that between the different facilities that we, that serve, our Kellogg wastewater treatment plant, our Tri-City wastewater treatment plant, and all of the pipes and pump stations in between, so.
Did you say five-year capital improvement plan?
Yes, yes. And that's both to rehabilitate some of the 40-year-old equipment that we have, and also to accommodate growth. We're also now able to, I don't know, some of you folks were, took part in the early discussions around the digester and the complexities of making an arrangement between the two service districts. We weren't able to have a 20-year planning horizon, or really even a five-year planning horizon when it came to growth, because every time we wanted to do something, it had to be a new and unique agreement between and amongst the districts and the local elected folks, and it was, it was very challenging when we're talking about 50- to 100-year infrastructure to not be able to plan that and not be able to count on a funding stream out into the future to provide that. So now we have that, and we're happy. As far as your rate dollars go, 78 cents is O and M, 22 cents goes into infrastructure financing and reserves, that's our capital plan. We charge for the wholesale treatment rates, so the folks in Gladstone, $23.75 per month per household. We also, where we provide the retail function, that's the pipes and the pump stations and the work that Gladstone does within the City of Gladstone, we charge $12.65 per month per household for that. Again, that doesn't apply to Gladstone, because Gladstone has your own fees there. And I wanted to put this up, I know, I see some rate charts here, and I know that you guys are having conversations about rates. I just wanted to point out that, you know, relative to Oregon City, Westland, and even us, which, you know, we're a much bigger organization, bigger economy of scale, kind of business, and frankly have infrastructure that's probably newer than what you folks are dealing with.
A lot newer.
And so you're a fair bit below market, I would say, with your retail rates. It's just my observation. Just some of the projects, we've got, stem to stern, like I said, $230 million over five years. Some of those projects are in the collection system, everything from upsizing our Clackamas Interceptor in the Clackamas Industrial Area to bring waste down to the Tri-City Plant, to work at our Blue Heron Facility. You know, we've got over 350 miles of pipes that we need to take care of, and five wastewater treatment plants that we own and operate. So, one that's more meaningful for Gladstone, our new 1.3 million gallon anaerobic digester is under construction. We're about a little over a year into construction, about half done, we're on time, we're on budget. That's going to come online at the end of this year, or the end of next year. What else? Yeah, anyway. Oops. I know this one's near and dear to your hearts, this is the 82nd Drive Bridge, and we've had this closed for the past few months now. We're completing a seismic upgrade and hanging an additional pipe on that bridge. It's about a $3.2 million project. When it's done, it will be able to withstand a magnitude 9.0 earthquake. It'll be more seismically sound than either the 99 Bridge or the 205 Bridge, so it could be a vital, vital lifeline. And it will carry traffic in addition to sewer pipes.
In an emergency.
In an emergency, yes. And I'm pleased to say this project is also on time and on budget, and we expect to reopen the bridge the first week of February.
Of 2020?
Yes, yes. So this is something that we've been working on for, oh, gosh, a year and a half or so. We finally have it in place. It's the Good Neighbor Agreement between Water and Environment Services and the Cities of Gladstone and Oregon City, where we set aside, it's $150,000 a year, 50 of which goes to Gladstone, 100 goes to Oregon City, based on the customer base, and that's to be used for projects that the city identifies that are, they're consistent with clean water, healthy communities, transportation, you know, infrastructure type stuff. So we're pleased with that. This is a map that shows the area where those funds are envisioned to be used, basically from High Rocks and 82nd Avenue Bridge down to Meldrum Bar and Clackamas Park. So a pretty good geographic area, where we're going to hopefully make some nice improvements along with the cities. So our Kellogg Facility, we're in the middle of a $23 million upgrade to that facility. Some of you in the room probably remember the, whether that facility was going to continue to be where it is and do what it does was kind of uncertain for about a decade during the 90s, and subsequently, there wasn't a lot of investment in that facility. So we're really going through that facility and bringing it up to modern standards, and that's been going on for about a year and a half, and we've got about another year there, and then we're going to be moving right into another construction project there. So we also improved odor control, which we're, we're pleased about, and so are the neighbors. See, that's a $23 million project.
For the commuters.
Yes, for the commuters, yeah.
Yes. One thing I wanted to, and this doesn't directly impact Gladstone, because you have your own surface water program, but we recently finished kind of a flagship stormwater treatment wetland facility. This is, well, you can see the Clackamas Industrial Area there in the, in the background, that's the Clackamas River on the right, and this is the Carley Creek Project. It was a farm for 100 years or so. We purchased it some years ago, and this past year, we finished a pretty significant, we restored 1,700 feet of creek and put in this 15-acre wetland treatment system. And so basically, when the, when the Clackamas Industrial Area was developed, that was before there were surface water rules and standards or stormwater requirements, treatment requirements, so all of that industrialized land was really just being piped directly into Carley Creek and into the Clackamas. And so we replumbed that area, we captured 400 acres of the industrial area, replumbed it into this facility, and this, thankfully, for you folks, where it may be interesting, is this is above your drinking water intakes. So, and actually, just after this was completed, there was that fire that happened in the industrial area and an explosion with some propane, and it was a pretty mess, pretty big mess, and this facility caught that before it got to the river. Very pleased.
Thank you.
That was a $4 million project.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oops, I'm not doing anything.
Quick recap.
Yeah. Just some of our, we also have a watershed grant program, so folks here or in the room come knocking on the door. It's about $300,000 a year, and we work with a whole bunch of partners throughout the community to leverage those dollars into good water quality, either projects on the ground or education-related projects. We also partnered with Solve this year, summer waterways cleanup that included High Rocks. We captured 11,000 pounds of trash, 1,700 volunteers, and 6,000 cigarette butts. So it was a productive summer. One thing, and Justin Poizner is representing Gladstone on this project, so now that we have kind of a consolidated system and organization in Water and Environment Services, we realized that we had rules that were developed in the early 70s for CCSD Number One in Milwaukee and Unincorporated Clackamas County. Tri-City Service District came into being in 1980, and the treatment plant came online in 1986, and so those rules and standards were never kind of married, or really updated for decades. So we're undergoing an extensive review, and it's, we've been at it almost, we'll be coming up on a year. And we've been working with the community, we establish a task force that includes the engineers and representatives from the different cities that we're going to be working with, but this is really a soup to nuts, everything from our system development charges and how they're, and our equivalent dwelling units and how those are assigned to stormwater standards and our, you know, expectations for sanitary sewer. So we will have draft out January 2020, and for the folks in the room, and as well as you folks, we have some informational forums that are coming up, December 5th and December 10th, in Milwaukee and in Oregon City. So it's been a long process, a lot of input, and we're looking for more, because it's, it can be impactful. So the last thing really I want to talk about is inflow and infiltration, and it's funny, I looked at a presentation that I presented here, I think in, it was early 2017, or maybe even late 2016, but I was saying, you know, the next big thing when we get done with this digester project to add the capacity is going to be inflow and infiltration. We have over 350 miles of pipe in the ground, some of them leak collectively, the cities that we, including Gladstone, Oregon City, Westland, Milwaukee, they've got at least that much, and their pipes leak too. And so this is a regional issue, and what we don't want to do is have to build treatment plant infrastructure to treat essentially rainwater and groundwater that gets into our system, because it takes people, it takes power, it takes chemicals, and that water shouldn't be in the sanitary system to begin with. So we're looking at over 20 years of $600 million investment in our collective collection systems. If we don't work together, we can tack on another 120 million, basically building wet weather treatment at the treatment plant. So we have a technical working group where, and Jim, why not, participates in that, of the public works directors of the cities, as well as our engineering staff that are getting together to figure out the best way to approach inflow and infiltration from a technical standpoint. Then we can talk dollars and cents and policies and how we're going to collectively cooperate to get that done. This just shows a regional map, it's everybody's problem. The pink areas are the areas, there's a number of, so our, our collection system or the collection systems is gray, and then the pink areas are the basins that we've identified through modeling and flow monitoring as having excessive inflow and infiltration. And so you can see, it's in Milwaukee, it's in Unincorporated Clackamas County, it's in Gladstone, virtually everybody has a piece of this pie, so we need to work together. And I'm pleased to say that we are. So that concludes my presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have one comment. So, thank you, Director Geist. I had the opportunity to tour the Carley Creek Restoration Project, and it's, it's pretty amazing, the work that you guys have done, and then just the natural filtration coming off of the industrial park. I mean, kudos to you and to whoever was the orchestrator and the architect of that project.
It's an amazing project.
It is, and I think that what's important is we get more of them at some point, and I'm sure you agree too, right? So it's, it's really, I think it was worth the money, and I think it certainly does a lot for that part of the river. So, yeah, kudos, and it's, obviously, it's a dynamic project that's growing and developing on its own.
Right. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that PGE, through their grant program, funded $380,000 of that $4 million project, so they were great partners with us on that. And we already have our site set on another location, it's called the Three Creeks Area, adjacent to Clackamas Community College, or, sorry, just south of, what was that?
To the M.T.
Yeah, the Harmony Campus, right. Adjacent to the Harmony Campus, near, in the, I'm just blanking on the bulk store, Costco, across the highway from Costco. That area has flooding issues as well as huge potential with, for water quality benefits, so that's, we're starting an engineering study right now, we're going to be going out for an RFP for that soon, and that'll be our next Carley, I hope.
Well, I want to stress to everybody how wonderful it is to have West at the table in a real collaborative arrangement, where it used to be very contentious. It's been, I hate to say fun, but we talk sewer at least once a month, sometimes multiple times a month, and the group is truly looking at this regionally and wanting to help each other instead of us shouldering the burden of our entire system's I and I upgrades. So we're doing everything we can, turning over every rock, trying to make this inexpensive as possible.
I have to say, I came into, you know, the planning and the preparation for this talk was a lot different for this one than in 2016, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Greg. All right, do we have any agenda additions or corrections?
I have none, Mayor, thank you.
All right, first item is the consent agenda, do we have any discussion?
No.
All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Someone.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Neese to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passed. Next is correspondence, do we have any correspondents?
I do not have any.
All right, we do have one, and Counselor Neese is going to read it.
And remember, this is from someone that has left this. I would like to state that Bill Osburn does not represent the citizens of Gladstone. The people have spoken when we voted for you and chose not to elect him. His agenda and voice are his own. It's unfair to every one of us when city resources, which we all pay, are abused and wasted. Using the media to manipulate facts, targeting people for character assassination, pitting neighbors against neighbors, those are his tools. His legacy to our community is dissension and persecution. This MO alienates and discourages participation in events, applying for volunteer or elected positions and other community action. It's time to stop going to the press accusing our own because in so doing, it takes us all down. No more time wasted on bogus accusations, which are nothing but obstacles to progress. Talking focus, taking focus away from current projects, all under the pretense of doing it for the people. The drama needs to stop. We need healing from damage this behavior has done to our community. We need people with the ability to collaborate and listen with open minds without attacking or tearing each other down. We need to hear from and listen to those bringing creative solutions to the table and those who treat our council and city staff with respect. We can use nonviolent communication and create a positive environment in Gladstone. I believe this is the best way to move forward and uphold the goals of vibrant, livable community. These are simply my opinions. I'm done.
Thank you very much.
You're here.
All right, a couple of things before we start. Couple of things before we start. First, for those folks that would like to speak, please fill out the yellow cards on the black table by the door. We have general business from the audience at the end of the meeting, but also have public comment during the individual agenda items. When you fill out the card, please indicate when you would like to speak, and we'll call you up at the appropriate time. I would like to have the cards filled ahead of time, so there isn't any confusion or delay as we move forward with the meeting. And as a reminder, we allow three minutes for public comment unless there are special circumstances, and additional time has been approved before, by staff beforehand. Second, I would like to say a few words regarding the City Council. Many of you have heard this many, many times, but I'm going to repeat it again. The most important limitation we have sitting here is that we are representing the citizens of Gladstone, not our own personal agendas and beliefs. There have been many times when a decision being made doesn't align with what we, what we like personally, but have made a decision based on what is best for the city as a whole. That doesn't mean our personal beliefs have changed, just that the city's needs were more important. As we discuss and consider matters, there are laws and rules we have to use as the basis of our decisions. These start at the federal and state level, then filter down to our city's comprehensive plan, city charter, codes, and ordinances. We do not have the luxury of randomly making decisions, but instead, we have to be consistent and take a path that is defensible. I want you to know that we appreciate all of you taking the time to be here and participate. In order to be respectful, please turn your cellphones on to silent and keep your side discussions at a minimum. And if you're not able to do that, I am more than happy to stop the meeting and let you finish your conversation or your text, and we'll pick up when you're done. My goal is to keep this meeting respectful and engaging, and I hope all of you can help us do that. Thank you. First item is number nine, intergovernmental agreement, also called an IGA, between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone regarding the new Gladstone Library. We're going to be considering multiple documents. A is the Library Construction and Operation Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone and its associated exhibits, and B is the Library Facilities Agreement for Use of the Current Library Building. So I'll ask the public comment to come up when we're done doing our initial questions period, I guess, our initial discussion. Anyway, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are asking the City Council to consider adoption of two intergovernmental agreements with Clackamas County. The IGAs outline the responsibilities of both the city and the county in implementing the settlement agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone. So I'd like to set the stage on how we got here tonight, and then Ashley's going to talk about provisions in both of the IGAs. In October 2017, the City of Gladstone and Clackamas County entered into a settlement agreement, which contemplates the construction and operation of two new library facilities by Clackamas County. One will be a 6,000-square-foot Gladstone Library located at the current site of Gladstone City Hall. The second is a 19,500-square-foot Oak Lodge Library located somewhere within the Oak Lodge Library service area. The settlement agreement proposed a one-library, two-building operational model, where both locations will be operated by Clackamas County. The settlement agreement also proposed other commitments by both parties, including financial responsibilities and a commitment to a robust public engagement as plans for both new library facilities are developed. Over the past two years, county and city staff have been collaboratively implementing the terms of the settlement agreement. Important dates in the process are as follows. In April of 2018, the Clackamas County Board approved the Joint Concord Gladstone Planning Process. In May of 2018, the City of Gladstone voters overwhelmingly approved Ballot Measure 3530, which provided necessary approval for the implementation of the settlement agreement, such as the location of the library and the $200,000 annual index contribution. In July 2018, the city and county approved an IGA for Mitzi Olson to provide temporary library director services to the city. Mitzi is the current Oak Lodge Library Director and has done a phenomenal job of overseeing both library operations, especially given the deplorable working conditions. In November of 2018, Clackamas County approved Amendment Number Three to the Library District Master IGA, which made specific changes to the Library Master IGA to facilitate implementation of the settlement agreement and the construction of the two new library facilities. Eleven other cities in Clackamas County had to approve that IGA as well. In December 2018 and January 2019, Clackamas County formed two community task forces, the Concord Property and Library Planning Task Force and the Gladstone Community Library Planning Task Force, to assist on the redevelopment of the Concord Property, including its possible use as a location for a new Oak Lodge Library and the future of the Gladstone Library. April 2019 through September 2019, Clackamas County developed a request for proposals for architectural services, evaluated the proposals, and selected Opsis Architecture to be the master planning, to begin the master planning process, all of which Gladstone had participation in. Clackamas County has invested $1 million in this process. And finally, in April 2019, city staff, including myself, Kathy Brucker, our finance manager, Nancy McDonald, human resources manager, and county staff, including representatives from business and community services, specifically Laura Zetner, Greg Williams, Mitzi Olson, their human resources facilities, and county council, in conjunction with our legal counsel, Ashley Jiskel, began working to develop two IGAs, which would be necessary to finalize implementation of the settlement agreement. After seven months of regular meetings, discussions, and negotiations, the city and the county have finalized these IGAs. The first IGA is a library construction and operation The first IGA is a Library Construction and Operation Intergovernmental Agreement and documents and clarifies various responsibilities of the city and the county pertaining to the transfer of Gladstone Library operations and employees to the county, as well as the eventual construction of the new Gladstone Library. The second IGA is the Library Facility Intergovernmental Agreement, which permits the county to utilize the current Gladstone Library facility for library services until the new library is constructed. So now I'll ask that Ashley go over the key provisions in the IGA.
Good evening, Council. Ashley Driscoll, City Attorney's Office. I put together a memo that went through what I think are the key provisions of the construction IGA and also facilities IGA. I'm going to go over those now. These are the ones that I assumed you'd be the most interested in. If there are other provisions of either IGA that you would like to discuss, please let me and Jackie know. Before I begin, I'd like to say that it was a seven-month process where we met regularly with Clackamas County, and, you know, we had a big charge. The settlement agreement between the two government bodies was two pages long and implemented, had quite a strong project behind it. So we had a lot of details to work out through this IGA, and I really appreciated how Jackie worked on this project, how diligent she was, and also the participation of the county. Really was two governments working together to try to reach an agreement that was fair for everybody. And I think what we have in front of you is a very good agreement, and I'm happy to talk to you about it. So going through chronologically, as chronologically as possible, what happens first? So under the recommended IGA of December 1st of this year, which is coming up very quickly, essentially, the City of Gladstone gets out of the library business. So you transfer operation and control of your library over to Clackamas County. With that, the employees that currently are in the library transfer over, and they become Clackamas County employees, and the city also transfers over all the assets that are currently in the building. Once that happens, or I guess already underway, Clackamas County, as Jackie mentioned, has already invested over $1 million into the planning phase of these two libraries. The county will be assuming all construction costs for the 6,000-square-foot library in Gladstone, which I'm going to refer to as the new Gladstone Library Branch. The city will also, and I should have mentioned this above, the city will also be paying a prorated $200,000 general fund payment for this year, and immediately, starting on December 1st, we will be transferring our district revenues over to the county. So again, the full operational control and the revenue associated with the library will go to the county. One of the issues in settlement agreement that was not made explicitly clear is that we are going to provide a parcel for the new library, and it is going to be the City Hall location. So one of the things that we worked through with the county was who's going to pay for the demolition of this building. One of the agreements that we struck was that the parties would split the cost of demolishing the City Hall building in order for the county to begin its construction. One of the things that Jackie and I worked hard on with the county was putting together a timeline, so the citizens of Gladstone could know when to expect their new library. And we were able to, and the county graciously provided a timeline that they thought that they could meet. However, we are aware that the county has quite a few other projects going on, and we wanted to make sure that the Gladstone Library project was going to be prioritized. That if they said they're going to, you know, turn it over to contractors in May 2022, that that was actually going to happen. So one of the things we worked with the county was, okay, you know, what's your incentive for staying on this timeline? You're going to put this into the agreement, you know, how do we know that you're going to be able to stick to it? So one of the things that we negotiated was penalties. If the county was unable to hold their end of the bargain, and it got excessive, that the county would have to start paying some penalties. This was an incentive to make sure that we stay on schedule. So I know some of the pushback has been, you know, it looks like that there are numerous, the county has allowed 13 extensions under the IGA, and that is not the case. What we did compromise on is that they would commit to a timeline, and then they would be allowed up to six months of one-month extensions. And if they feel like they're going to not be able to meet their milestone, they let the city know ahead of time. I believe it's 10 days before they know that they're going to need an extension, they need to alert the city that that's going to happen. If it gets excessive, so if they get six months behind, then the penalties start. So in the beginning, it's, you know, a relatively, well, I think still a pretty substantial penalty of $5,000 a month for a couple of months. If they keep going, it progresses to $7,500 a month, and then after that, it becomes a $10,000 a month penalty for falling behind on their timeline. And again, one of the reasons why that was an important provision to the city was to make sure that this is going to happen on the timeline that the county agreed to and a way to try to enforce that. So we did add those terms in. One of the other concerns is that it is a one-library, two-branch solution. However, we have a location already selected for the Gladstone Library Branch, and the other library branch in the one-library, two-branch solution has not selected a location yet. So one of the things that we agreed to is to decouple the projects if the Oak Lodge Library is unable to select a location by, I believe it's July 2020. So again, the focus on if we're going to agree to this timeline, how do we know that the county is going to stick to that timeline? We've put some provisions into the agreement to encourage that. The other thing that's going to happen under the IGA is that the current Gladstone Library Board will dissolve. If you take a look at the Gladstone Municipal Code, the current Gladstone Library Board reports to the Gladstone City Council as the body that is operating the library. Because you're no longer going to be operating the library, the code needs to be revised in order to reflect that. So that library board will be dissolved within a year. However, that does not mean that the citizens of Gladstone will not have a role in this process. One thing I want to clarify in my staff report is that the city will have proportionate representation on the Board of Trustees' Library Board. So the city will not appoint those individual members, but the city will have proportionate membership on that board. The city will also stay a library city under the Master IGA. So you still have representation on the LDAC. So that's where the operations are going to change immediately. Again, immediately, the city's going to get out of the library game, and the county's going to take over operation and control. They're already in the midst of building a brand-new library. We are excited for its arrival sometime after May 2022. However, when you're working out these agreements, you work on the future, the great things that you're going to do together, but you also have to take a look at some of the unexpected things. So planning for, you know, unexpected items that may come up in the future, and also, if this relationship doesn't work out in the future, how are we going to get out of it? How are we going to extricate ourselves from this relationship? So we did quite a bit of time on the termination clause and divided it into two different points in time. So before Gladstone, before the county closes on construction debt, which is defined as debt specifically related to the Gladstone, the new Gladstone Library Branch, and after the county takes out that debt. So if either party terminates this agreement before Clackamas County closes on any debt, in essence, we will return to where we are right now. So the district boundaries for the Gladstone Library Service District will be as they are right now. You'll be operating out of the current Gladstone Library Building. All the employees who transferred over to Clackamas County will transfer back to Gladstone. All the assets that transferred over will transfer back again. However, if it is the city that terminates, so if we enter into this agreement and then terminate before the county is able to close on any debt, essentially, the city gives up its opportunity to have the county assist it in providing a new library. So as this is implementation of the settlement agreement, we give up our right to use the settlement agreement or any of the foundational documents to have the counties participate in building a library in Gladstone. If the county terminates during that time, they are subject to the same penalty they were under the settlement agreement, which is a cash payment of $360,000. So that's what happens if either party terminates before Clackamas County takes out any debt. However, if either party terminates after the county takes out debt, either before the building is finished or at any time after the building is finished, the landscape looks a little bit different. So if either party terminates, the service boundaries would then change. The City of Gladstone would have your new Gladstone Library Branch, which will serve the city population. You will transfer back the employees necessary to operate that building, and you will receive the district revenue that is associated with the jurisdictional limits of the City of Gladstone. You will also stop paying, if either party terminates, I should say either before or after the county takes out debt, you stop paying the general fund payment, clearly. So if the county is the one that terminates the agreement after the county takes out debt, then the county is responsible for still paying all the debt associated on the Gladstone Library Building. So for whatever reason, six years from now, your building is built, and Clackamas County would like to terminate this IGA, they can go ahead and do so. The city would then take over operational control of the building, but Glad, I'm sorry, Clackamas County would still be in charge of paying the debt on that building. Once the debt is paid off, they'll transfer ownership of the building to the City of Gladstone. If the city terminates after the building is built or after the county closes on debt, we are responsible for taking over any remaining debt payment on the building. So if there's still $1 million left, we will have up to a year to get that money together, and then we will take over that payment. If the county has already paid off the debt associated with the building, then if the city terminates, the city gets operation control of the library back, the new service boundaries, and the building free and clear of any debt or other obligations. So again, we don't expect that that's going to transpire, but, you know, if any time in the future the parties want to go in a different direction, we have laid a roadmap of what that would look like. The other agreement that's before you, again, is more details of how this relationship's going to look. While the county is building the new library, they're going to be operating out of the city's current library, and they are going to have a license to do so. So essentially, we are letting them use our building in order to operate the library. One of the big issues is, as Jackie alluded to in her comments, the building isn't in the greatest of shape. So we spent some time talking about who's going to be responsible for maintenance of that building. Essentially, the county's going to take over maintenance of that building until it reaches a certain extent. One of the things that we discussed quite a bit is whether or not it would be a good use of public resources if something was to happen to that building one year out from finishing the new library. Are we really going to reconstruct a brand-new library? What would our library service plan look like? So we tried to take a pretty comprehensive approach to this IGA. As I said, the settlement agreement was two pages long. It left a lot of holes. So we spent the last seven months trying to work together to solve those.
And you did all of that without looking at your notes?
It was seven months.
Seven months. Oh. That's impressive. All right, well, I see lots of notes and yellow tags on, so, questions? Who's going to start? Go ahead, Councilor Tracy.
So, question for you. Sorry.
Ashley?
Yeah, question for staff, I guess. So if we do decouple at this six-month or at the July 2020 date, I'm assuming that prior, the run-up prior to that will still be in design and engineering. So that, at least those things will be in motion. If they need to decouple because they haven't found a second site, then I want to be clear that we will have been accomplishing things up to that point, will we not?
That is correct, yes.
So we're not wasting that six months or seven months waiting for something to happen? We're in process, we're moving forward. If they can't land the site that they're looking at or looking for, we're still in good shape, and we're decoupling, which may expedite our timeline, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I've had, my biggest headache over this one was the timeline. And I've had many, many conversations over the last couple of weeks, and I'm very confident that that timeline will be moved up.
You know, it's difficult because our negotiations and our partnership has been incredible with Clackamas County. From a staff's perspective, we don't even want to talk about termination language in these IGAs, but legal has to do that because these are binding documents to protect the city and the county. But from a staff perspective, we're already making progress and moving forward on this. And I truly believe that the county is dedicated to building this building. And I also wanted to remind you that when we first entered into the settlement agreement, it assumed a $300 per square foot amount. Technically, that meant that it was about $5.9 million for Oak Lodge Library and about $1.8 million for Gladstone. But we know that construction costs have escalated, and now they're projecting it's about $500 a square foot, which means that for Gladstone, that's about a $3 million library. And they are fully committed to funding that gap. And we heard that from the county administrator, and we heard that from the county commissioners. So I truly believe that this agreement that we have drafted is what the community has guided us to say go forward with, and that the county is committed to building this building. And if that means that we decouple and move forward, the county is willing to do that. Any other questions?
On the extensions, Ashley?
Uh huh.
Were, for the first six months, they don't pay anything, correct?
That's correct.
And why did we put, why have we put that out there for so long and given them six months?
So it was part of the negotiation. So, you know, we wanted, you know, what is your timeline? And then we saw it, again, to Mayor Stempel's point. We knew that it would be, you know, some problematic, a little bit longer than we had expected. But we needed them to commit. But from their perspective, you know, things come up, things that are unanticipated, that, you know, perhaps are no fault of the counties, they've just come up. So what we try to do is say, you know, what's reasonable under this situation? You know, what is a reasonable amount of time to have things come up? What's the point that it got excessive? And where we reached is that, you know, under this situation, a project of this size, you know, you have to give us notice every single month if you need another extension. And then at that seven month, seven months, you're going to be subject to a penalty.
So in that six-month timeframe then, and are we continuing to pay our $200,000?
So we would be continuing to pay that, yes.
All right. Because, I mean, I don't want, if we're going to start this project, I don't want to see it delayed. And I do, where it says various milestones for Gladstone Library construction varies per contract. So what holdups could happen in here?
So what holdups could happen in milestone one through four?
Instead of being a little more specific, because, you know, if we're going to do this, let's do it. And I don't want to say, you know, 2025 comes, and then we're still not there in 2026, and we're still, you know, trying to figure things out. And I just think we should have more of a timeline, a better timeline there.
Okay.
When Clackamas County did their presentation to the Gladstone Library Board and the city council a few weeks ago, they said that construction would be May 2022 to the summer of 2023.
Okay, all right. Questions?
Councilor Rice, there?
No, well, not a question as of right yet, but I wanted to pass on as the library board's liaison that there was a robust discussion about this a week ago. And they had, not all members, but several had, too concerned was on the timeline, and also on fair, equal representation. But after the dust settled, they asked me to pass on that we approve this agreement so that we can move on and get a library. Also, they asked that I remind everybody that there will be no additional taxes with this project.
That's always good.
Yeah.
Questions? Councilor Tracy?
So I wanted to, I think that there's a general misunderstanding with some folks about the $200,000. So I understand it as an operation subsidy, basically coming out of the general fund to subsidize the district funds that we receive for operation. Is that, is that close to what that is? I think there's a general misunderstanding that these are monies that we're putting forward toward a good-faith agreement towards building the library, when in fact, it would be additional, these monies would be expended anyway for operation, whether we own the library or somebody else owns the library. Is that true?
That is correct.
Thank you.
And I also want to reiterate that the current library property is not part of this agreement after the new building is up. So in other words, the city retains ownership of the current library property. We believe that the parking requirements, which I- We believe that the parking requirements, which I think are 15 off-street, will fit within our current code. So if the city wanted to enter into an agreement in the future for parking, they could, but I would suggest not making that decision until the new library is built. So you have the value of that, that site over there for future development or whatever you want to do with that as well.
I know there's a library person here that's going, "Store! Library store!" Any other questions for staff? Right, I know there's some public comments, we start calling them up. Michael Milch?
Michael, there he is. Michael Milch, I'm a member of the Library Board, but I'm speaking as an individual. I think every time we reach one of these milestones in this project, it's, you know, it's appropriate to give, express some thanks to the people who made it possible along the way. I'm grateful to City Administrator Betts and former County Administrator Don Crutt for kind of drafting that initial conceptual, or concept for this whole settlement, and to the city councillors and county commissioners from fall of 2017 who helped to put it into, into law, to enact it. I'm grateful to the, as I've worked on the, on the board and helped appoint the committee, the Task Force Committee that's worked on this, we've had really good working relationship with the county staff that's been involved in this project. Greg Williams and Laura Zentner from the Business and Community Services Division of the County, the current Commissioner, our current Administrator Gary Schmidt, and the Project Director Catherine Krieger have been a pleasure to work with. They've been open about, you know, the difficulties of this, of this issue, and we've worked together collaboratively. It's kind of a theme for tonight, you know, starting with the water and moving on to And I want to say that, as Ashley has explained, in any kind of a document like this, you have a lot of legalese that helps you prepare for the sort of worst-case scenarios that might come up. But the impression I have is that both sides, both parties to disagreement are committed to making the best-case scenario happen here, which is really good-quality libraries for both Gladstone and the Oak Lodge community. So I encourage you to wholeheartedly endorse and support this IGA and put it into action so that we can make use of this, the good work that's gone on, and put this into play. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have the timer worked out?
I've got it. Sorry.
Do I have some time left?
You came in under two.
I came in under two. All right, well, let me say one more thing.
Sounds like me.
This is an intergovernmental agreement.
I'd ask you not to be swayed by people who have a history of enacting and complicating intergovernmental agreements and turning them into intergovernmental disagreements. We want to, we want to be cooperative, we want to be collaborative, we want to work with our regional partners the way we do in water services and other areas. One more thing, I know we'll be dissolving the Library Board. I hope that we can replace our local Library Board with a Community Services Advisory Committee that would serve, that would advise the City Council on matters related, not only to the library, but all the other similar services for literacy and development and human improvement here in our community. I think that would be an appropriate thing. It would not conflict with the County Library Board of Trustees, and I hope we'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next. We'll come back. Okay.
Which one of these is the microphone?
That's the drinking straw.
Thank you. Les Poole. Boy, this has been a long haul, a long haul. I have a couple of questions and a couple of thoughts, and just a quick comment, and that is that Clackamas County, and I say this as objectively as I can, Clackamas County does a great job of watching out for Clackamas County, and I don't really fault them for that. And at times, I think Gladstone and some other communities have had the short end of the stick, we'll just say it that way. And so my concerns are that all the Ts are crossed, and that if something doesn't work out, we don't get burned, because I think the citizens want a library and they want closure. With regard to this property, I certainly support the idea of redeveloping this leaky city hall and voted, voted for the effort to put it here. I do still have concerns that we've never had a resolution decreeing that the library is here now, to the best of my knowledge. And there's a lot of confusion about that. Some folks think the library is going to be with the city hall up the street at the civic center. By decree, I think we still have a resolution that has the library up at Webster Road. So for sake of clarity and avoiding confusion, I just want to make sure that the public and everyone knows what's, what we're getting into, and that after all these many years, we're at a point where we can make a decision, I hope. The reason I say I hope is that I have one last question or concern, and that is, because that property was condemned up there for parks and a library, my concern is that have, do we have any issues? Do we have any legal ramifications still up there? Was the previous owner notified or given an opportunity to purchase the part of the property that was taken for a library? I do not want this to come back and bite us. My question is very sincere. It's not an attempt to stop the library. If I wanted to stop the library or dissect this agreement, I would have done it long ago. So I do have concerns about any loose ends or legalities that would come back and bite us, and I've expressed them before. So let's just make sure that if, if we're in a situation where there's unanswered questions, we don't get our cart in front of our horse again. We've got one last shot at this.
Time's up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next. Steve Johnson.
So I am still not clear about how our library operations are funded today. The budget is a difficult document to read, but it appears to me that we are 100% funded by our service area from the library district. Is that true?
No. The city has always subsidized the money that comes in from the county to operate a library.
And how much is that in the current biennium?
I don't know. Kathy?
Okay.
Okay. So we're going from $30,000 to $200,000, and I extrapolated that number out 20 years, and it becomes closer to $362,000. I mean, we called it $200,000 in all the documents, but really, at 3% compounded interest, compounded interest, compounded payment, it becomes $361,000 by the 19th and 20th year. So are we sure we've got all these numbers where we think they are? Also, I submitted a plan that is less expensive and faster. I would like to ask the council to take that seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Bill Osborne.
Well, I think this is one of these things we all agree on. Recently, there's been less and less of that, but the community wants a library. There was a lot of roadblocks in the way the first, we had to do a recall. We cleared the path there to drop the lawsuit with the county. Started working with the county, and now we have the county agreeing to build us a library, one that's accessible to everybody, since our current one isn't accessible to anybody who's disabled. So I'm hoping that you will all support this IGA. I think the community does. We passed the initiative by, I think, about 75%, where people approved moving forward with the plans, so that we could have this partnership with the county. And I think it's beneficial. I think the biggest thing is, is we're going to have a 6,000-square-foot library that the county is building, and we don't have to spend the money to do that. I understand we all pay property taxes, and that goes in the library district, so in a way, we're somewhat paying for that, but it's the same we would pay whether we have one or not. So having the benefit of the library, I think, is beneficial to everybody, and I hope we all agree on this, that moving forward with this partnership with the county, I think, is our best choice. So I hope you all support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Susan Liston. Can everybody here in the back, if you can, just make sure that you guys speak into the microphone.
Susan Liston, Gladstone Library Foundation Member, 550 East Exeter. Mayor Stempel and Councilors Ripley, Neese, Tracy, Reasoner, Todd, and Mercerow. Hearing how our city and our county can collaborate and cooperate on October 14 was exciting. Cooperation between two government entities, sharing resources, working together, serves everyone, including our community. The county's commitment to our new library, to the necessary funding, was heard loud and clear. County Administrator Gary Schmidt clearly stated, "The county will pay to build our library and, most importantly, will pay any escalation in building costs between now and when we build." Our library, with its limited resources, provides many services. The new library will extend these services to more people. A few of these services are: Libraries help people connect with our community, whether they come from other communities or from different countries. Help and information is at our library. Libraries help everyone see themselves represented in our community. Our library is a valuable resource. Over summer vacations, evenings, and weekends, the Gladstone Library is available to our children. Programs and activities that help preschoolers, elementary, middle, and high-school-age children, as well as adults, are in place at our library. Libraries revitalize struggling, depressed neighborhoods and cities. They are partners in sustainability. $9,630 is the average added value to homes with a public library versus those without. $4 to $8 in resources are returned to communities for every dollar in revenue collected, depending on the state. Libraries are our people's university. Whether you are looking for a fun storytime, a person in need of language resources, an unemployed person searching for job help, please visit our library. People coming together, learning, sharing, celebrating where we live, who we are, and what we want to become. Our library enriches us individually, as a community, and regionally. In today's world, we need librarians and libraries more than ever. Let us join with Clackamas County to build the jewel and heart library for our community we all deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Beverly Chase.
Beverly Chase, Gladstone Library Foundation President, 8405 Casey Road. Thank you all for letting me talk. I want to share some statistics from our Charlie Brown Library that I think you'll find interesting. 756 children signed up for the summer reading program this year. The foundation has financially supported the summer reading program since, through the generous proceeds from our book sale. The preschool literacy morning programs, between 200 and 300 children have attended the storytime since the first of the year. 5,689 registered borrowers in the library. The library houses 46,018 books. 804 internet sessions during the month of September alone. 9,151 internet sessions since the 1st of January. 15,308 total circulation going in and out of our library in September alone. 227,393 circulations to date since January. Between 3,000 and 5,000 people enter and exit to visit our Charlie Brown Library each month. With 12,000 people in our community, this equates almost 50% of our local population visit the library in any given time throughout the month. The teen programs have 30 to 40 participations, participants each month for the different programs that we run for the teens. The Task Force has chosen Opsas architecture as the design team, and after seeing the large complex they designed in Vancouver, we believe we really made the right choice. And with the partnership of the county, we can have a jewel of a library that the citizens of Gladstone really deserve. I hope you will approve the IGA. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Glenda Shearer.
Hi there, my name is Glenda Shearer, and I reside at 1525 Columbia Avenue, as says my daughter. 10 years ago this month, my husband and I moved to Gladstone. And within a short time of being here, we heard rumors and got all excited about a new library that was going to be built. I am really sad that it's taken this long to get to this point, and now that I have children, it's especially saddening to me, that there might have been some people in the community who were formerly on the city council, who had their own agenda, that dragged us through a lawsuit. I implore you to please pass this IGA. I've waited for 10 years to have a nice library. I used to live in the Midwest and teach in the Midwest, and the Midwest is not necessarily known for their educational standards, and you'd think that Oregon would be much better. But I'll tell you, when I lived in Springfield, Missouri, we had an amazingly beautiful library. The idea of going to a library where there's mushrooms growing on the side of the wall would never have flown there. And so I think that because we are a small community, and we are committed to education, and we are committed to grow our community, you need to pass this IGA. And my daughter would like to just say something, okay? So you have to, honey, you have to say your name.
My name is Daphne, and I love libraries because they, they have so many books. And I think that this town would like another library, especially the boys and girls.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Daphne, you did fantastic.
Okay, good job.
Mindy Garlington.
So I would just, I'm with everybody else, but I'm going to have my voice heard as well. I want that library built. I've lived here 25 years, and we've been going to the same library with the same smell for 25 years. So it'd be nice to have a new library. And Linda, in answer to your questions, six months is nothing. Those plans have to come before planning, they could send them back, come back. Now all of a sudden, you're behind a month or two. Now you're going to hit a silver thaw and you can't pour concrete. Okay, well, now you're going to order some steel, but the steel can't come in because the mill's behind. A million things can happen that put things behind. It's nothing against Gladstone, it's nothing against a build. Your soil could be- Your soil could be bad, and you've got to figure out what to do with it. You know, lots of things happen, so don't let six months. Just let it go.
Thank you, misunderstood.
Okay. All right, let it go. Anyway, the one thing I would like to say in the words of Walter Cronkite is, "Whatever the cost of our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that of an ignorant nation," or "that of an ignorant Gladstone," is what I say. Don't let Gladstone be ignorant. Give these kids a place to go. Give our adults a place to meet and become neighbor, better neighbors. And give us a building that we can use, that we, the people, can use. We deserve it. And the people have spoken. They have voted for this library. They have voted again and again and again and again to say yes. And they want, the reason, you want to know why the people can't figure out where it's going to go? They've heard ten stories for ten years. Give them one story. Build it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next. Last one, Kevin Johnson.
So I didn't really start looking at this thing until the last couple of days, so maybe I can get a couple of questions answered. I saw something in there about some of the language is going to be put into the contract that hasn't been written yet.
Are you talking about, is it about five?
I don't remember exactly what it was. Something about a contract.
So there's no other contract that hasn't been written? So there's three documents. There's the construction agreement, there's the facilities agreement, and there's a transfer agreement. So all three should be in front of you.
Okay. So my second question is, the $200,000 gradually goes up. That goes into the general fund for the library district, right? So in other words, that $200,000 is not going to pay just for operations of the Gladstone Library.
So there's no restriction. So we are providing the $200,000 to the county to bridge the gap for library operations.
They can do whatever they want to, library operations, or debt payment, correct?
We are not micromanaging how they're going to spend that money.
So, and believe me, look, I voted for the last measure to get this library built. I'll be happy when it's done, as long as people in Gladstone understand that I'm not sure the county's being as big a savior as everybody thinks they are. Over 20 years, that $200,000 totals $5.3 million. Their library, well, it's hard to tell exactly because the thing in the packet is apparently old data from the original $1.8 million library. So they have, and now it's whatever it's going to be, they have, they're going to use reserve money of 3.5 million, a revenue bond of 4.2 million. So the 3.5 million dollars is partly our money, because it's coming out, I'm assuming, out of the general fund of the county. So Gladstone is going to be putting in an extra 5.3 million, and if you, if you use the same calculations as the district, Oak Lodge taxpayers should be putting in over 15 million, and they put in none. So essentially, Gladstone is helping to pay for Oak Lodge's library. It's, I mean, I don't understand, maybe that's, maybe I see it wrong, and somebody can explain it to me better, but that's the way it looks to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff? Would somebody like to make a motion?
I move to approve the library construction and operation intergovernment agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Gladstone with Exhibits 1 through 5, and then also the library facilities agreement for use of the current library building.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Question was made by Counselor Reisner, seconded by Counselor Tracy. Any further discussion?
I would, if I, so I had a lot of questions last week during the library meeting, which I apologize, that's your meeting, I'm supposed to be just there to bring back what your thoughts are. And same concerns that they did. But after really looking through it line by line, and knowing that, as has been spoken here, I mean, I've been in this town for almost 30 years, and it's been talked about that long, that it's time to move on. And I want to thank Mr. Williams, and I apologize, his lady to his left.
Zettner.
Zettner, their work also, and not only in this, but also for just libraries across the county. So that's.
Anything else? Why don't we do a roll call vote, if that's all right with you guys? Counselor Ripley?
Yes.
Counselor Neese?
Yes.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
So just so that everybody understands, how many people have been working on this? Could the people stand up that have been working on this process? And don't be shy, I know there's a heck of a lot of you out there. Thank you all so much for your work. All right, next is item number 10, Clackamas County Library District Task Force. Staff.
It's a library night, I tell you. That's a, that's a great.
The way it looks better.
Great outcome, thank you very much. So really, what this item is, is Clackamas County is in the process of forming a Library District Task Force. This was a task force that was commissioned by the Board of County Commissioners to examine, discuss, and make recommendations on various issues facing the member library cities. This is one of the outcomes from when they went on their tour to different cities to talk about amending the master IGA. So we vetted this with the Gladstone Library Board at their meeting a couple of weeks ago. In the proposal, you see that this is actually an 18-month process. Myself and the library director will be heavily involved, however, we also need a couple of citizens to participate. The library board would like Michael Milch to be appointed to this committee, and they reserved their right to choose another member until we get further along in the process and understand who might be more qualified to be on some of these subcommittees. Also wanted to note that if the Gladstone Library Board dissolves before they're able to make a second recommendation, that the new combined board that Gladstone service area members are on will be the ones making that appointment. So it is staff's recommendation to follow the wishes of the Gladstone Library Board to appoint Michael Milch to the Clackamas County Library District Task Force.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Would someone like to make a motion, then?
I'll make a motion to accept Michael Milch is on the Clackamas County Library District Task Force.
Motion was made by Counselor Neese, and postponed by Counselor Todd and Counselor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Michael Milch it is. Number 11. Resolution 1169, a resolution adopting a revised master fee schedule and repealing And just so everybody knows, these lovely props that we have shown here on the front table is having to do with this agenda item. And our master plans are all over there on the table, and a whole lot of good information is around the room on these boards. All right, staff.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What you have before you tonight is to approve a resolution to update your master fee schedule. Your master fee schedule is where we put our fees for services. We typically update it this time of year, and it goes into effect January 2020. We want to be very clear that we're talking about utility rate increases in this master fee schedule. These are the utility rates that at your last city council meeting, you gave us direction to come back and implement tonight. So we'd also like to have the Public Works Director, Jim Wynot, to just do a very quick review of what we talked about at the last meeting and actually for the last couple of years. And then we also have Kathy Brucker here tonight, as Kathy and I had a conversation with Piper Jaffray regarding bonding, and if the city wanted to go out for bonding their infrastructure in the future. However, I want to reiterate that we're not asking the council to do something different than what's proposed tonight. We still need the council to approve these utility rate increases, primarily because we have a mandate by the Department of Environmental Quality to fix the overflow sewage that is in our river. However, I'll hand it over to Mr. Wynot to give a summary.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. What you have in front of you is a revised master fee schedule reflects the Option B as directed by Council at the last meeting, and also was based on our community survey. About 60% of the citizens recommended doing more than the minimum, which kind of pointed at basically Option B. Option B for a typical, typical single-family home, what that would equal would be a $17.27 a month increase. And that's for a typical, I mean, there's going to be some a little bit less and some a little bit more, but that is the majority. And so what the bill would be, it would be going from $68.05 a month to $85.32 a month, or it'd be a 25% increase. Broke down by utility, within our utility bill, $10.08 of that would be going towards the sewer. Our sewer fund is hurting the most and has, as Jackie mentioned, the mutual agreement order of DEQ to fix its infrastructure in the next five years to stop overflowing raw sewage into the Clackamas River, which our system does every time it rains, because it was not maintained correctly, it's fallen apart, and there's still several stormwater system pieces of the infrastructure connected to the sewer system. Of that $17, that would be the $10.08, a dollar increase of that would be going into the stormwater fund, so the stormwater can continue maintaining its system, which up until three years ago, there was no stormwater utility. As you know, back in 2014, when these conversations started with master plans and rate studies, the stormwater master plan says you need a stormwater fund. And so the city did some lifting then and implemented a stormwater fund, phasing that in over a couple of years. The other part of that $17 increase is going to be $6.19 for water. The water system has some dire needs, as explained in our master plans, both.
And the props.
And the props. And these are all, these are just some things that I could carry up easy. These are all within the last couple of years of pulling out of the ground. And as you can see, like this piece, for example, it's got two repairs on it. It was, the system has been milked along and patched and band-aided so much, we're getting to the point where we can't, you can't band-aid a piece of Swiss cheese. So we're having to replace the infrastructure.
Well, and we figured in our earlier discussion about 70% of our water lines look like this.
Yes. No, absolutely. It is, if anybody wants to take the time, we've also been doing a monthly report of what Public Works has been doing for the last two and a half to three years, and it is just full of stuff like this. I mean, this is what we do. We're not making it up. This is, this is what our crew's doing, and they are busy full-time, just doing repairs. Also, what you'll notice in this revised master fee schedule is a water rate restructuring. So even with the water rate restructuring, we're still looking at that average of about $6.19 increase. The issue with the water structure the way it is, is approximately 55% of those citizens out there, and that's about, or accounts, excuse me, which equal about a little over 1,800 of the 3,400, actually pay for more water than they're using. So our, the way the structure is right now is you get a bill, and it includes you're paying for six units of water, whether you use them or not. And more than half of those use less than six units of water. So with this rate restructuring, we're getting rid of the water included, we're setting a base meter charge. And how we came up with this base meter charge is we took our current budget and we took all the fixed costs. So these are costs that do not change. You have staff, you have contracting, you have repairs. All this stuff that doesn't change. You can go through our budget and look at that. There's fixed costs that do not change based on the amount of water used. And how we came up with the per-unit cost is all those variable costs. So the cost of water, electricity, all the things that change based on how much water the city uses. So that's how we came up with this rate structure. And then miraculously, it's, it pretty much mirrors what other entities in the area do, you know, with the exception of it not being as much. So, but it's, the way it worked out is it's, we felt that was the most reliable and honest way to do it. So that's how we came up with the rate structure the way it is. The other thing we added in there is we've been having issues with meter tampering. And what I mean by that is we go out and shut somebody's water off for non-pay or some other reason. There have been times where customers have gone out, cut the lock, broke the valve or a meter, and so what we're doing is we're putting a $250 meter tampering charge in the master fee schedule. And what hopefully this will do, and we will, when we go out and shut water off for non-pay and said, "We will let people know about that." And hopefully, people won't break the system. So we have to go out there and fix it. So at minimum, if they decide to do it, this barely covers our cost to go out there and dig that service up and fix it. So that's another change you'll see in the master fee schedule. Hopefully, it becomes a non-issue because now someone will have to pay for the broken parts that they do. Also, in the master fee schedule, per our right-of-way ordinance, we increased the right-of-way by 3%. And that's in the ordinance that was adopted back in 2016, so we implemented that as well. And all those changes are highlighted in yellow, so you can see what changes. Police also added a couple of things in there. If you have questions on those, I, she's smurfers here, he can come up and talk to you about those. The other thing you'll notice in there is we got rid of the Tri-City Service District and Clackamas County Service District charge there. They are now Water Environment Services. So you'll notice that change, and if you had questions about that, that's why that is. They were the same cost anyway, they just didn't exist. So it's West now Water Environment Services, so we made that correction in there as well. The only thing I can add to that, you know, reiterate that the city started working on these rates prior to me even getting here, prior to some of you up there on the bench as well, back in 2014, with all of our master plans, rate studies, SDCs, we've implemented the SDCs already.
System development charges.
Oh, excuse me, yes. So for development, they pay their, they pay their way into the system as well. So this has been going on for a long time. We've had a lot of open houses, lots of information out there in the bills, in the newsletter. Some of these boards that you see up here, these are boards that were presented at our last open house when we did the survey. A lot of information, it's been going on for a while.
Questions?
I'm going to have Kathy go over the bond options real quick.
So Jackie and I spent some time speaking with Carol Samuels at Piper Jaffray, and just at familiarizing ourselves, you know, as we do periodically with the types of debt that would be applicable if you did want to do a major infrastructure type of borrowing. Typically, it would be a general obligation debt. This would be a voter-approved and would increase your property, the property taxes of all the people that were within the designated boundaries for that election. Offers the lowest rates as far as interest goes, and your term on that is roughly equivalent to or less than the life of the improvement that you're financing. Something that is very common in utilities are revenue bonds. They're normally not subject to voter approval, but they're very stiff as far as qualifying for something like that, as far as the debt coverage requirements that you would have to have in order to be able to secure financing for something like that. It can be referred and then can end up at the, at an election for voter approval also too. It's usually a 1.25% amount of coverage of net revenue, so you must always be able to cover your debt service and then an additional funding over on top of that for a cushion. The analysis costs are necessary and all costs associated with that with, you know, performed by qualified consultants. So there's a lot of ancillary costs in. So there's a lot of ancillary costs in even securing that, that type of financing. Something else that Carol brought up that neither Jackie nor I were really familiar with, but it was an interesting idea, she called it a double-barrelled general obligation issue, it's kind of a hybrid of the two. It is voter-approved, but it's structured to where the intention is to pay with it, with utility revenues. But if for some reason the revenues didn't cover the debt service on that, the city would be able to levy property tax necessary to meet that debt service, so it provides a, you know, an insurance on that. It eliminates those coverage requirements, and it's usually your best cost of money on the, you know, as far as, again, all the ancillary costs. The SEC has got all sorts of regulations in now on municipalities also, so we're required to contract with either a municipal or financial advisor or an underwriter to proceed with even accumulating the information or having them run financial scenarios, anything like that. So if we did want to go with something like that, we would have to enter into a letter of engagement with them. They are easily backed out of if there is, you know, if we determine there's nothing that's going to take place. The underwriter would take the issue basically from start to finish as a negotiated sale. And an underwriter can move to a municipal advisory role if the city decides on a competitive sale, but a municipal advisor cannot move to an underwriter role. Underwriters, it is the most flexible relationship, it has a duty of care requirement, provides the scenarios, the financial consultation, and the fees are charged if you go through with an actual bond sale. That's when you, then you pay for any of their expertise. A municipal advisor has a heavier degree of responsibility, it's under a fiduciary responsibility, but it is either entered into on a hourly contract rate or fees are charged at the time of bond sale, and it works with the entity in a competitive sale environment. So basically, that's about it, you know, as far as what we can tell you, just to give you an overview, an abbreviated overview of that type of situation.
Counselor Reznor.
Does that include borrowing from the state? Do they have a program?
That would, we did not look into that as far as borrowing from the state. I have no idea what the maximums are, what the rates are. I've seen some other entities that are utilizing that, but I'm not familiar with it.
I don't know, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, I wish Greg was still here. I thought it was like 3%.
Because I know that's where they got their money from for what they're doing over at the treatment.
Yeah. It's like the state revolving fund.
I think we'd like to explore this further, and we're hoping that when we're having our January retreat with the department heads and city council, that we can, we can talk more about these opportunities and we can certainly get information on the state's program, because I think that we need to position ourselves to do something about our infrastructure above just raising our rates. And the school district bond, I think, sets in about seven years, is that correct? But it's going to take a good year or two to get ready to even go out for a bond, and so we'd like to discuss this further with the council at our retreat in January, to say, "Do you want us to go ahead and enter into a letter of engagement with Piper Jaffray and explore what is that cost going to be to the voters?" But we can certainly also reach out to the state to see what their programs include as well.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And this is done because we've been listening to the citizens and what they thought were options that needed to be pursued, so that's why we're looking at the bonds also. Counselor Tracy.
So, not off-subject, is the budget, Ms. Brucker, is the budget reviewed and/or audited by an independent third party at any time, our city budget?
By our auditors, they review it when they do the audit every year.
And they do it every year?
Yeah.
One time at least?
Yes.
And this is an independent party?
And they look at it in relation to, are we, you know, handling all the publications, advisories, et cetera, notices and things correctly? But they also look at it in relation to, are we staying within budget?
Okay. Do they look at appropriation lines and make sure that fungibility is followed, I mean, that we're-
Oh, yes. Yes, they do.
And then what do they do after they audit it, or they do an independent review of the budget?
Well, it's done with, at the same time that the audit is done, so it's done in conjunction with the financial statements.
Okay.
So they're looking at what we projected versus what historically then did happen.
And then will they certify the budget? Is that what happens, or what do they do, what's the final?
The budget is certified by the county, by Clackamas County, as far as our assessment, you know, the property tax assessments. They certify it in relation to, that we are following budget law, Oregon State budget law.
Okay. So there wouldn't be flush funds or something there that would-
The party fund.
You know, I'm just curious, because it seems to be, it's like, I think-
Yes, it's very strictly regulated.
Okay, because general understanding seems to be that this is just created in a vacuum with nobody, no oversight, no independent oversight. I just want to make sure that you, as the financial director, are telling us as the council that that's not the case.
That is not the case.
All right, thank you very much.
We retain Marina and Company, they are third-party independent, they're finalizing your audit from last fiscal year and will go before the Audit Committee December 19th, and then that will come before the city council to approve in January.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Counselor Todd.
I was just wondering, you know these budgets, and I think that maybe people look at them a little bit differently than what we do with our own personal stuff. Maybe, you know, you're, you spent too much money at the beach that weekend, and so you're going to have to cut back a little bit on your groceries or whatever. You're not able to just move just a little bit money from parks, which doesn't have a lot, and a little bit of money from police and fire to, you know, just a little half percent there, a little half percent there, to put it into our infrastructure, correct?
No, we are not.
There are two different funds, there are different types.
There are different funds, there are different departments, there are different types, exactly.
And we don't choose that. That's actually the, meaning that we're following the rules of the state budget.
Yes, and it all goes through a review of the Budget Committee and then comes to the council for approval when the budget is actually formulated. And any changes to the budget are brought to the council, and it's all public record.
And there's no line in there that says "profit"?
No.
Because if there is, I missed it, and I was looking really hard.
Yes. We, by state law, we have to budget all revenues and all appropriations, and they must balance 2-0.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought I was missing something pretty big. Any other questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the audience. I'm sure you guys will be back, so don't go too far. First is Angela Riley.
I just wanted to say I've changed my mind since I did the survey, and now that I understand it more, and after being at the last council meeting, I'd like to, the one, the answer, option C, that gets our infrastructure fixed as soon as possible, that's, we had a big problem when we moved in and bought our house, it was, we had all kinds of problems, they had to wait to move in, anyway. It was, let's see which pipe, the road was torn up, it affected a bunch of neighbors, cost us a bunch and my neighbor. So, understanding that it's broken, there's no money, and no one's to blame, no one here is to blame, it's an old, old blame. I'd just like to move forward and focus on fixing it at the fastest option, so whatever you have in your disposal to, you know, vote for that. I believe that's how the majority of homeowners feel, somewhat supported by the survey, and I just feel like we need to flush our toilets, and it's really important to me not to have the problem get worse because we didn't, like, get really proactive. So as homeowner, I just really, I really support this, so let's do it. Also, I noticed there's a way for seniors or people on fixed income to get help. I can't remember where I saw it, if it was in the bill or the statement, for them to get help coping with the cost, because I know I'm asking for people to have to pay more money, but if there's a way to contribute to that cause, or if that's something that's even allowed, I just think it would be great for that to be available for people, and even available for people maybe to contribute to if that's even an option. I don't even know if that's an option, but if there's a link in the city website or something in our statement or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jackie, write that down, let's see if we can get some people to contribute to that.
Central Lincoln County does that, their PUD, where you can round up or whatever for people that need help. I just didn't think about it till now.
I think we need to think about that. But we do have a somewhat robust, going to be more robust, program to help with the people that need it.
Yeah, it's amazing how many people don't participate, and that's one of the takeaways that we're really going to market more in January, is to make sure people understand that we do have a program in place.
Yeah. Okay, next. Kevin Johnson.
So, you might hear later tonight from people that aren't going to want this increase, and I'll just be blunt, that's the stupid mentality that got us where we are today. It's the stupid mentality of a mayor that we had for almost 30 years, or for almost 40 years, and at least three councilors that went along with him, to not raise rates. At some point, I mean, they probably didn't raise rates for years. So now, we're so far behind that we've come to this. Do I want to pay more? No. But the reality is, you can't fix anything, you can't maintain anything, let alone fix it if you don't raise the rates. So the longer we wait, the worse it's going to get. The stupid mentality has to stop. So I would support the rate increase, and I'd also say that I think there should be an ordinance or resolution, or however you do it, that it goes up by whatever measure you want to use on a yearly basis, cost of living, CPI, whatever, whatever method you want to use, can go up every year automatically, you don't come down here and listen to everybody whine and complain. The other problem is, I mean, the people that aren't going to like this, they come down here and complain to you guys because it's easy. Do they go to the directors, board of directors' meeting, it's safe way when their grocery prices go up? I doubt it. Do they go to West and complain when the sewer rates, the treatment rate goes up? Probably not. But they come here because you're easy pickings, they think. It's time to get this done and move on.
Thank you. Next. Bill Osburn.
People come here because you guys are here to represent us, so that's why we come to you. First, let me say that nobody wants a broken infrastructure. We all want clean water and contained sewage. We want our rivers to stay clean also. We simply disagree on some of the steps to get us there. This doesn't mean one is wrong and one right, just different, and that's okay. We are all neighbors and we can agree to disagree with each other. One of my biggest issues with the city is how manipulative or deceitful some of the information you have provided is. Some of the numbers are artificially inflated. The survey that was put out came back with option A as the highest pick. Instead of really in that number, they combined B and C and stated over 60% choose more than the minimum. While it's true, it's also misleading, and there was no option D, not to increase rates. God, it would be interesting to see if people chose that. One council member made a post, which, after Kevin Johnson up here talking, a former council member, I guess this just hits, hits true even more, made a post accusing the residents of such delusional stupidity that they actually think they are doing good, as they question the more superior intellect of others. I hope that individual apologizes to the people of Gladstone. We all understand prices go up and not down. When you're less than honest and ask us to trust you, that is where we have issues. I would ask that you respect the choice of those who have taken, you've taken an oath to represent. I would ask for no rate increase now. If you choose to ignore that, then I ask that you pick option A, as the residents pick that in the limited options section. I'm sure you will ignore anyone who's spoken up about this or at least this point of view, but I hope you'll prove me wrong. I'd also like to point out that Gladstone is the only city around that has a right-of-way fee or privilege tax and passes it on in their sewer rates. And the option to pay more to help people also, I think, and I've suggested this with other things, is that some people come up here and they have no problem paying more, so why not allow people to opt in to pay more, and those that don't, not to? I think a lot of people who say they would pay more probably wouldn't, but I would hope they'd stand behind their words. Also, just to clarify my use of gross profit in the social media post, I meant gross profit, and I explained it as the amount you took in versus the amount you have to pay for that, those utilities for the sewer and the water. There is a markup already, so that's what I meant by gross profit. I understand governmental budgeting, everything has to be accounted for and spent, and unfortunately, if there's a surplus one year, you can't bank that and spend it on other projects the next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Last is Kelly Chaney.
Hi, my name is Kelly Chaney, and first I want to say the tone of Mr. Osborn's comments, and frankly, the substance, is the reason you guys are sitting up there and he's not. Gladstone has spoken, we voted for you, we trust you, and we trust you on the library, which he apparently trusts your opinion on that, and we trust you on the sewer. Those things took a long time to develop, and I think waiting on the library was good. We have a better location, we have a better deal. Probably the same thing maybe will happen with this mess. I grew up on Arlington, swimming in the Clackamas River and drinking out of the hose. I know that's not going to happen anymore, but I will pay the $17 a month. I'm a single mom, my roots need done, I have no manicure, I work 55 hours a week, but I'll pay the $17. I will pay Mr. Osborn $17 a month for the next year, and I, I will write a check right now and back it up, because this needs to move forward, and we need to get this fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. That was the last. Good. All right. Any more discussion, questions for staff? Someone like to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion.
All right.
See, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 1169, adopting amended master fee schedule.
And repealing resolution.
And repealing, sorry.
Resolution 1163.
Thank you, and repealing Resolution 116.
Motion was made by Counselor Tracy and seconded by Counselor Todd. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Mayor?
Aye.
Yes.
Can we do a roll call vote on this?
Yep, we can do a roll call vote on this. All right, Tammy. Counselor Ripley?
No.
Counselor Neef?
No.
Counselor Tracy?
Aye.
Counselor Reisner?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Counselor Mercerow?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
Passed. Oh, actually, no. Yes, yeah, it's passed, we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're done, because we did the roll call vote, yeah. All right. Okay, do we need a second reading, a third reading, a fourth reading? All right, next is item number 12, Resolution 1170, Establishing Policy Regarding Media and Executive Sessions. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have before you tonight is a resolution that establishes who is recognized as a news media organization in the print media and the television media. First of all, I'm very pleased to say that we very rarely have executive sessions this past year, and we've really cut back on that. But this was the missing piece, is who, if media wanted to attend our executive session, who is that? We look to our neighboring cities to see what they do as far as policy, and really what they said is they focus on those local media organizations that they generally do business with. So what we have proposed in here is, we know that there are many media outlets, especially in the metro area, but who really is established with Gladstone in the print media is the Oregonian and the Clackamas Review. As far as television media organizations, you have KATU, KGW, KOIN, and KPTV. If you feel like we need to add any, we certainly can do that, but that's what we viewed as the local media organizations. the local media organizations, that if they wanted to attend an executive session, they would be recognized. There are going to be times when somebody that is not on this list is going to want to attend an executive session, so what we're trying to do is to put a process in place called recognition of other entities, and it's in Section Four of your staff report. And it has a very nice process, that if somebody wants to attend an executive session, then they need to fill out a form, and then they need to provide proper documentation, specifically regular publication, regular broadcasts, or regular updates, at least once weekly of news. Show a publication, or a broadcast, or a website that must contain a minimum of twenty-five percent news content, include news produced by its own staff. And so we have some criteria in place, so that if the city council was going to have an executive session and that person wanted to participate, they could show the proof, and the city council could choose to allow that media in their presence or not. There is one correction that I want to make to you tonight, and thank you to Ashley for that. If you turn to page twelve-six in the resolution, under Section D, right now is worded, it says, "The request for permission shall be on a form provided by the council," which I attached a copy in your packet, "the person requesting permission to attend an executive session must complete and sign the requested form." We would like to change that to then say, "The city requests the form be filled out within twenty-four hours before the date of an executive session," eliminating that it must be submitted. It would be our preference that it's submitted twenty-four hours ahead of time, but if somebody submitted it that night, we want to give them the ability to provide the proper documentation in an open session. We would ask the city council to review that and then make a decision whether or not you wanted that media organization to participate in the executive session. So that's the one correction that we'd like to say, is that the city requests that the form be filled out twenty-four hours before the date of the executive session. You have a copy of the form in your packet, and at this point, I will answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Oh, I'm getting there. I'm just waiting.
Councilor Reisner.
So, reading through this, I have an issue with the definition of news on twelve-four, meaning factual information that's about current events in regards to the Oregonian. There's many times where the information they provide is not very factual. So I can't support this.
So can we get rid of the word factual? It just means information that is about current events? Can we do that?
You can amend this any way that you want to.
Would that be okay with you?
Sure.
So just strike the word factual in one A.
Information that is about current, okay.
All right. Next. That's it.
Oh, that was pretty much the...
Anything else?
For me?
Councilor Tracy.
So this is a question for the city attorney. If we were to meet in an executive session and we were discussing personnel issues, and somebody was attending that session that doesn't necessarily follow the creed, the journalistic creed, does the city not incur a liability if information that should be guarded information, or confidential information, or client privileged information be introduced into the community through a blog or a social media entry? Does the city not incur a liability with that?
It depends. Which is the best answer.
Of course, because it's an attorney's question.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you bring up a really good point, that, you know, we are very careful with how we present personnel information, and, you know, for many really good reasons do not disclose it. In that situation, if somebody was to attend an executive session as a member of the news media, and then reported on what he or she heard within the executive session, that person would be violating the public meetings laws, and we could make an argument that the city did not disclose that information in a way that would incur liability. You know, is it a distinction that matters in the greater respect? No, I mean, that person's information is still disclosed, and so it's still problematic for the city, even if we had a defense.
And so I'd follow that question up, if I may, with another. If we're in a real estate negotiation, for instance, this is another reason for an executive session, if that information is divulged outside of the executive session, we then run, not a liability risk, but we could run a financial risk. We could be at risk. As long as the information that should be guarded information is not guarded, we are at risk, are we not, potentially?
Yes, I mean, in that situation, if you're going to, discussing what you're going to put an offer on a piece of real estate, and that gets out and somebody undercuts you, yeah, you know, you're at a financial risk.
Okay. Thank you.
And the unfortunate part, I learned this at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, is there are no real consequences. There aren't. The damage has been done, and you will say, you're not allowed to attend future executive sessions, but... Yeah, there's no consequences for somebody that leaks that information. And I want everybody to know that we go into executive sessions kicking and screaming. We have tried everything and every way to minimize the executive sessions that we have. I don't like them, I don't think any of us do, but they're necessary, and it's important that we keep that confidential relationship with the HR, personnel, whatever it is that we're doing in executive session. Any other questions for staff?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. Since I had not been involved in this level ever before, going into my first executive session, there's a script that's read, and it's read, and it says, "You cannot tell anybody, can't tell your spouse, you can't tell your kids, you can't tell anybody."
And say "you," meaning you, Councilor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the thing, you can't, you can't, I can't, just me.
Just you.
And when I heard it, I was like, well, is that, and I even asked sort of jokingly, I'm like, is that just a guideline? No, it's not a guideline. And so, having somebody from the media in the room, there's a journalistic integrity that you know of something that is off the record, and that's a journalistic oath, and so I just went, I didn't know that there was, that was read, and, you know, that you agree to that, so I just wanted to let anybody know who doesn't do that.
Can I answer? So, the reason is to keep us honest. So if we venture off topic, because there's only certain items that we can talk about in executive session, as mentioned, personnel, purchasing property, or selling property, maybe. Litigation. Litigation, or maybe, you know, evaluating the city administrator, and it's a positive... Well, so, but to keep us honest, because from experience, we have a tendency of...
Not we.
Okay, not me. Prior city councils, because we hardly have, that was one thing that I questioned when I got on here, was how many we had ventured. And so, that's what the media is here to do, and I've participated in executive sessions where we've had a media representative who has raised a hand and said, "I think you're venturing off course." So, the bottom line is to keep us honest.
And we do have it in, if we're going to have an executive session, it's in our agenda. It doesn't tell you exactly what it is, but it will say ORS, blah, 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 litigation, or, you know, so that it's noticed. Quickly.
I know you don't. As a public media supporter, I'm wondering if you'd be willing to add KPBS television and radio to your list of recognized broadcast media on this place?
Yeah, that's fine. KPBS.
That OPB.
OPB, yeah. All right, any other questions? All right, would someone like to make a motion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a...
Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Bill Osborne.
Bill Osborne. Yeah, first I would like to say, I do appreciate there are less executive sessions. That means a lot to the community and to myself personally. I've asked the council to implement policies in the past with no results. Complain after complaint against council members violating the law or trust, and their oath was ignored. To be more specific, it was given to this body, and through no action, you chose to operate above the very law you govern. Now you want to start making policy. This is a result of being under investigation by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission for violating ORS 192.066. I hope our tax dollars are not going for this endeavor. I had three choices to deal with this violation. I could file a lawsuit and cost the city thousands and thousands of dollars. I could ignore it, but that's not my nature. The Ethics Commission option was number three. We will know where that's going, if that's going to progress after the twenty-second of this month. The policy you're probably going to adopt may put you in violation of Oregon law again. You use a 2016 legal opinion from the Attorney General as your guide, I'm assuming, because that's the biggest write-up on the executive session, and that very guide warns about placing policies that wouldn't conform to the law. I would advise to take a little more time and evaluate this policy better. If not, you could find legal challenges to it, and that always comes with a big price tag. It's important to have policies in place and keep our city protected and out of costly legal trouble. And I just want you all to know, my motivation in filing the complaint wasn't to get even with everybody, or out of anger. It's just, I had limited, limited options. I've made complaints about things that have happened before, violations of law, and they've just been ignored. So something had to be done to get things happening, so adopting this policy, where I think it needs a little tweaking, I think is a good step. I think other policies need to be adopted, so that when complaints come in against you, that we have a policy. Because in the past, we've seen favoritism play out, and everybody should be treated fairly and equally, and that's again why I filed a complaint against everybody. I didn't want to be saying, you know, this person is a friend, so I didn't do it, or that person is, and this person I don't like, so I filed it against them. I did it to be fair and equal for everybody, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
That's under business from the audience?
If it's related to this, you can move it here.
Okay.
Okay.
Kelly Chaney?
Here I am again. I sit on two nonprofit boards, and executive sessions are not nefarious, they're legal, they're allowed, they're necessary, and just because you complain about them or you don't like them, doesn't mean you have to go file lawsuits or complaints. These distractions keep the council from doing the work they're committed to do, and then we hear from the citizens, "Why did this take so long? Why did that take so long?" This is a volunteer position that you guys hold, and if you're having to defend yourselves on every decision you make, it's, that's going to suck up all over time, and it does cost taxpayer money. We pay for the city attorney. We pay for the insurance that's going to have to defend these claims. We pay for the insurance company's attorney. And it's a waste of our money, because somebody doesn't like the way things are done, they don't have a seat at the table, so they're going to pick and pick and pick. And there's a lot of people in the community who are done with it, and they didn't show up tonight because they're scared. I know the person that submitted that anonymous note, and I don't know her well, she, her kid, our kids go to school together, but she messaged me and she said, "Kelly, I'm afraid, I'm afraid of retaliation that you guys get every day. I'm afraid of retaliation. I'm afraid I'm going to be sued, and my husband won't let me do it." What kind of a community is that? Where, you know, it's like, it's like somebody comes up here and says, it's like an abusive relationship. "Why did you make me hit you? I complained and complained, and you didn't do anything about it, and now I had to file this, and now we have to, and I'm sorry for that. Why did you make me do that?" It's a vicious cycle that has to stop. So there's many, many people who are signing this memo of support. It's not a petition, it's not a legal filing, it's not an opinion article for the local review. We don't need any of that. We can talk citizen to citizen, and we will turn this in for the council to use as they see fit to the insurance company that we're paying for, or the attorneys that we're paying for, and hopefully end this. I'm here to support our city council members, and all city employees and volunteers. I have witnessed ongoing confrontation, ill treatment, and mistrust of our local leaders, which has caused the breakdown in our community. The voters in Gladstone elected the best individuals to represent their interests, and I would like our votes to be respected, beginning with the dismissal or withdrawal of the state Oregon ethics complaint filed against each and every council member before us. Gladstone tax dollars are now being used for perhaps rate increases on our insurance, they're being used for the city council attorney, who had to respond to these accusations, attorneys from the insurance company, and more, to defend this recent self-serving, senseless ethics complaint.
Time's up. I'm sorry, I hate to do that.
Well, we will submit this, and you guys can use it as you see fit.
Thank you. Should we clarify that we're paying for the attorney?
That's right. I think we should.
And clarification, we are paying for the attorneys. Us personally are paying for the attorneys. I'm having to take time off from a business that pays my bills, that pays my employees' bills, so that I can go down and defend myself and defend everybody up here. It's just ridiculous. All right, anything else? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion. Recommend approval of Resolution 1170, establishing a policy regarding media in executive sessions, with the amendment...
Of one A, getting rid of factual.
Correct.
And adding OPB, KPBS to the media organizations.
Correct.
All right.
And I will second that.
Motion was made by Councilor Mercero, seconded by Councilor Neese. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And just for your information, I am now a professional journalist. I went and took thirty seconds to get that, get a press pass. I'm also a minister, and I've never, I have zero credentials, and I'm an FBI agent. All of that was done with a click of the mouse on the internet. So, you don't know who you're dealing with here, FBI and a minister. All right. Yeah, call me. Don't know what I'm doing, but I'm an ordained minister. All right, next is number thirteen, Ordnance 1497, adding chapter 5.55 to the Gladstone Municipal Code, called the GMC, titled Business Food Waste Requirements. This is the second reading. Do we have anything additional from staff?
I have nothing further. This is strictly the second reading of this ordinance.
All right. Council have any discussion or questions?
I'm still against it. Don't like being told what to do by Metro.
All right. Well, then, if someone would like to make a motion, please, on this one?
I'm going to go ahead and recuse again.
Okay, all right. Councilor Tracy is recusing himself on this one? Would someone like to make a motion? Um, I will.
I would like to make a motion of the adoption of Ordnance 1497, creating in the Gladstone Municipal Code, chapter 5.55, Business Food Waste Requirements.
Do we have a second? We have no second for this one?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilor Todd, seconded by Councilor Ripley. Any further discussion? Why don't we take a roll call vote on this one? Councilor Ripley?
Yes.
Councilor Neese?
Yes.
Councilor Reisner?
No.
Councilor Todd?
Yes.
Councilor Mercero?
Yes.
Mayor Stempel?
Yes.
Passed. Thank you very much. Next is Business Carried Forward. Do we have anything?
I have nothing.
All right, business from the audience, and I want to remind people that there's a three-minute time limit to this. First up, Mindy Garlington.
Mindy Garlington, Gladstone. I'm just here to share that on October 24th, myself and some other residents from Gladstone went to the Women in Le... went to the Women in Leadership and Management Awards Luncheon, and where we got to watch our mayor get an award for Public Servant of the Year from the city of Gladstone, our mayor from the city of Gladstone. It was really, really neat. The room was full of people, the women, the other women that are, hold offices in our county, the people that were there to support everyone, the stories that people shared, and the fact that our mayor was included in those people. So, go Mayor Stempel. You're awesome. You deserve it. You go.
And as I stated then, it isn't me, it's all of the people that help push these things forward, and my amazing friends. Beautiful, smart, fearless friends. Next. Glenda Scherer?
Hi, Mayor, again. My name is Glenda Scherer. I reside at 1525 Columbia Avenue. And I wasn't planning on speaking a second time, but I just am very curious about why an anonymous letter is allowed to be read. I'm very concerned. Each one of us who spoke tonight filled out a piece of paper, we wrote our name on it, we wrote our address, and we wrote down what we were going to say, you know, the topic. So I'm very concerned, and I want to know from a legal standpoint, why that is allowed, or if she is in error to have read that. So I'm, is there-
Well, it's correspondence. We do have a correspondence section-
Okay.
And that came in at the very last minute. So we usually include, so that's why I always encourage people to please submit things in writing, so that it's included in our packet as correspondence. And this came in at the last minute, and that's why we did. We didn't have a chance to photocopy it or anything, so.
Okay. The second question I have is, shouldn't correspondence be about a specific agenda item?
No, we get correspondence from just about anything.
Okay. So anonymous correspondence is allowed?
We get interesting ones.
Okay. And are they always read?
When we get them last minute like that, we have done that in the past.
Okay.
Because if they came in, they would be in the packet, so it would be in public.
Okay.
Public record at that point.
I just think, I think it's, it's, I'm just really concerned about this. And I agree with some things on, some of the things, I'm like, okay, just let it rest. I'm just talking in terms of, I think that it's just furthering discord in our community. And I think that if someone has things that they need to say, then they need to come up here and sit, just like each one of us did, sit here, say, "My name is blah, blah, blah. This is what I am stating," and put a face to a voice. And I don't, I don't think that it's fair. So, so I'm understanding that anonymous correspondence is allowed to be read, so anybody could, so I could just, well, if I don't like someone, I could write something about something, and it doesn't have anything to do with any agenda item, or any topic that's, you know, pertinent to the, to the city council, and just start lambasting someone.
We get it in business from the audience. We've got it forever, and we do get interesting correspondence. So I get some that are cut-out newspapers.
Yeah, okay. That's scary.
Yeah, no, we do.
So I guess, I guess, I don't agree with this, because I think if you're having, if you're saying, and especially because that's held very targeted, and I don't know what all is going on.
Time's up, but-
Thank you.
Yeah, no. The business from the audience, people target us constantly and other people, so.
Mayor Stempel, if I could?
Yes.
So, from a legal perspective, it's a policy called by the city. So, the city's policy is that when you get correspondence, you read it at the beginning, whether or not it's signed or dated or not. My assumption would be, if that, it became an issue in the future, the city might decide to do a different-
Okay. I would like for that to be something that's considered.
Sure. Absolutely. Next. Last is Angela Riley.
I'd like to end on a positive note, and I just went back and talked to the new police chief, and I'm sorry, I don't know his name, but I was talking with a friend of mine about how safe we feel in Gladstone, and how wonderful it is to get to streets where people drive the speed limit. Thank you.
Yes. Isn't that nice? All right, so that's done, business, okay. Next is business from the council. Start with Councilor Mercero.
I have nothing.
All right. Councilor Todd?
I just wanted to say that I was sort of, I underestimated how I'd feel about having this library deal go through, and it actually brought tears to my eyes. I've lived here 50, well, 49 years today, and I've lived right next to the library, and the summer reading program was always so important to me, and my kids riding their bikes down there. It really, I had no idea that I would sort of have that moment, and I just, I'm happy it happened. I really am.
On your watch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want, any watch, get it done.
Ah, get it done. All right. Councilor Reisner?
Back a few months ago, we discussed about, we established earlier this year park rules, and revisited maybe the fines and penalties attached to them, and handed it over to staff, and I was curious where the, what the status is on, on that.
Go ahead.
It was-
Chief's members in it.
It was before chief was hired, that's why I'm kind of bringing it up now.
Correct.
Yeah. If you could move it to the table.
Yeah.
Sure, I guess.
Come by the pipe.
Yes, I received, well, I had discussions regarding park rules and fines and penalties regarding that, whether they're constitutional, unconstitutional, or what have you. We were looking at that. I did speak with our city attorney. I'm going to review those. I have asked Bill Osborn, who's been working with me on that, we've decided to push that off kind of to the first of the year, because of all the activity that's going on, one in the police department, my new hire, getting staff on board, et cetera. But we've also asked other community members to be involved, too, to sit on that. So, we haven't really started that yet. Plan on doing it after the first of the year, so, and Bill and I have already talked about that a little bit, so.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
That's it?
Wanted to thank our vets and for their service for our community and country, and also wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully you'll get a chance to spend time with family and friends.
Councilor Ripley?
All right, meeting.
Councilor Neese?
I just want, I felt like you did, and I'm sorry, Mindy misunderstood about, when the six months, I had no intentions of that. I just wanted, my heart is with the library, and has been. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't going to extend it out, and nothing was going to get in the way of delaying it. And, so that's where I was at.
Councilor Tracy?
Yeah, I'd like to address Ms. Scherer's comments. I want to tell, is it Glenda?
Glenda.
Or Ms.? That's a plus in your column. So, I agree with you. And I'm uncomfortable with that as well. I do know that if we have a policy, and to the mayor's point, it does happen. We get correspondence, and, you know, we get attacked. We're politicians. So, we have to have thick skin. A lot of us get attacked in ways that you, a lot of folks who are sitting in the audience tonight, or who are citizens of this city, have no idea. So I agree. And I'll talk to the mayor, and I think my colleagues up here will discuss that, because I agree with your point. However, I will also say that Ms. Chaney, on giving us a source, indicated that there is a threat perceived. That's not a town I want to live in, all right? So, though the anonymous letters, I don't feel, I'm not comfortable with, I also don't want to live in a town where people are feeling like they're going to be threatened by lawsuits because they speak up, or threatened in any other way. So I think we're in this delicate balance here. I think what we need to do is a couple of things, and Mr. Osburn, I don't want to personalize this, but frankly, at this point, to me, you're a politician. You've run a number of times, and I have a different relationship with citizens than I do with politicians. You want me to apologize for everything I say, or everything I do, or everything I think, but you're a politician. You need to grow a thick skin if you're going to be part of, you want to be on the team, you want to be part of the game, you want to work for us, you want to represent us. People are not going to be nice to you when you get elected, obviously. You haven't been nice to us.
Wouldn't be here still if I didn't have a thick skin.
Understood, but you're, you're attacking a lot more recently than, than anybody else. I mean, we're trying to actually move stuff and policy along. I don't want to, we're not going to get into a protracted conversation. I'm just saying that I support Ms. Scherer's opinion about a letter that was read aloud about you. So, you know, I mean, let's move on from this, Bill. Let's go on and make the city a city that other people want to come and live in, because right now, the attacks are just not working out for anyone. I think you've heard that loud and clear tonight. Thank you for participating, and that's my time.
I have a couple of things. First, I want the people who fiercely fought for the creation of our new library to know that they are so appreciated, and unfortunately, they all left. So, there's a couple here. So please, please pass on that message. It's been a very long and very contentious road, and without all those amazing people, we would not be here today, seeing that light at the end of the tunnel. And I also want you to know that no one represents the city council or the staff, except the city council and the staff. There are people out there in the community that are saying they represent us, and they don't. It is us and staff, and those people that we've appointed to represent us. That's it. Nobody else. And if you're out there saying you're representing us, don't, because we hear it, and it's not true, and we'll make sure everybody hears that over and over again. Second, it seems to be the season of incomplete information. Outright incorrect information being pushed out via social media. We are trying to get the correct and factual information out in the best way possible. So I'd ask that if you have questions or concerns, please reach out to us or staff, so that instead of relying on spin, you're getting the information. Before you make assumptions and continue spreading the bad information, please go to the source and qualify the facts first. Thirdly, thank you to everyone that helped with the Halloween celebration. It was awesome. It was so much fun. It was bigger and better than it was last year. So many people have signed up to dance the witch dance next year.
It's going to be great.
It's going to be great. And we've started reaching out to other businesses in Gladstone, the car dealerships, others, and they all are very excited about participating. So if you have ideas, or if you want to help, or if you want to learn the witch dance, just let me know, and I'll hook you up. Next, and last, is the Gladstone Holiday Tree Lighting. The flyers are on the back, November, or November 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00. Seven, we're going to light that tree. We've got cookies. If anybody wants to know any cookies, thank you, Susan Liston. You know, that's welcome. Carolene crafts, all kinds of things. It's just, this is another one of those events that really starts the holidays off right, and it's getting bigger every year. So, please come. Everybody's invited. If you want to dress up like an elf, we may be doing a flash mob dance. Don't know yet how well I'm going to pick that one up, but you never know. Others than that, at the Senior Center, depending on how many people, last year, it poured down rain, but we still shoved everybody into that front room. So hopefully, we get a lot more people this year, and we'll have to use the big room.
It won't be raining.
It won't be raining this year. No, no. Oh, my. It stopped raining for about 10 minutes when we went and snuck out and actually lit the tree, but that's up. And we're going to have new snowflake decorations going down Main Street.
Yes.
We're growing up, guys. We're growing up. Other than that-
Snowflakes!
Oh, please, please, I'll start doing the snow dance tonight.
No, not yet.
But, other than that, I don't have anything.
I've got one thing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I came up with a crazy idea, and I wanted to just bring across to council to consider. One of the things that happened, and is happening, while we're getting a new library built, is that in four years, three years, whatever it comes out to, we're going to have a vacant library and parking lot for the library. And the city citizens have a lot of money, unfortunately, to pay out. I don't know how we're going to quite do it all, for the $130 million for infrastructure and whatever. But a consideration for the council to consider is that I asked, while reviewing the I G A, I asked a question about what the library is valued at now. And I don't know how accurate the numbers are, but approximately $780,000. And in four or five years, okay, my estimations, it'll be worth $1.1 to $1.2 maybe, or maybe more. Hopefully more. But that might be a consideration to put against our infrastructure repair. It's not a huge number, but I've been kind of crazy in saying, we ought to do this in five years.
Oh, boy.
Which the numbers are tough. They are tough, as a project matter. I can say it would be tough. But regardless, my intent was to cut the costs down somehow. But one consideration would be to use the assets from the old library and the parking lot to a possible portion of that infrastructure. That's it.
All right. Well, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
Motion was made by Councilor Neese, seconded by Councilor Reisner. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:57 PM.